I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Please stand for our invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and sing into the National Anthem. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together to serve. Be with us in our deliberations in all that we do and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in us. We also ask that you would grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, can you see by the blunderly light what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming booth of shires and bright stars through the everlest sky? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the red streaming moon gave proof in the night that our flag was still there. O say, 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 O say,[613.12][613.12][S04, in natural science Alexandra Wisner of Hagerd High School. Julie Shin of Laney High School cannot attend from Ashley High School Madeline Lamert. And we have another screaming eagle Mark Murphy from Ashley High School. Sarah Spalding from Hagerd High School cannot attend and last in this category is Zaid Khatib of Isaac Bear Early College High School. In the social sciences category we have Brooke Hayne of Isaac Bear Early College High School. Ladies and gentlemen these are our Governor's School students we are honored to have you. Our last recognition for the evening is for the energy conservation contest which New Hanover County Schools sponsored recently. The goal was to achieve a perfect audit by changing the behavior of staff and students regarding energy conservation and I'm excited to say that our own Blair Elementary School under the leadership of Mrs. Barbara Stock had a near-perfect audit and has won the Energy Conservation Award of $500. Isn't that awesome? And I believe Paula Zapka is here. Our energy manager Paula Zapka is here to honor Ms. Stock and her team. Thank you. That concludes our award ceremony. Thank you for your attention. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Next item on the agenda is our call to the audience. As you know, we have two times that we have a call to the audience. The first call to the audience for those individuals who have a topic they would like to discuss within the three-minute timeframe of an item relating to the agenda. It has to relate to the agenda. Towards the end of the meeting, we have another call to the audience for anything that you'd like to say. Well, maybe not anything, but just about anything you'd like to say, maybe that's non-agenda related, then the board certainly wants to hear you on that. And you can also sign up for these online up till I think it's 3 o'clock.
12.
12 of the day of the meeting. And then if you don't do that, then you can still sign up once you arrive at the meeting. These sheets are over here and you can still sign up. The first individual to sign up is Kenneth Porter.
Superintendent Dr. Markley, board members. My name is Kenneth Porter, Board Chair of Wilmington Preparatory Academy. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you on behalf of Wilmington Preparatory Academy. We have been in existence for six years since relocating to 4905 South College Road. What used to be the site of the New Hanover County Pre-K Facility, we have seen marked improvements in our students' performance. Our AYP scores have risen, they are up to 71 percent. We have achieved overall high growth. We, the Board of Directors along with the Dean, Faculty believe at this juncture of our existence, another move would not be beneficial both to our students and our parents, especially when other students continue to exist in the same locations year after year. Please let's not interrupt what progress that has already been made. We want, all we want is to continue to build upon what is already good. We need you to renew our lease for the upcoming school year 2013 to 2014 and consider a new lease of three to five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Kristy Nix.
Good evening, Dr. Markley and members of the Board. I am addressing you as a concerned parent, a taxpayer, and a representative of the future homeowners of the Anchors Bend subdivision. We recently discovered that the elementary school assigned for Anchors Bend is not Ogden Elementary, nor even in the Ogden area, but rather Castle Hayne Elementary, which is a significant distance from Ogden. It does not seem logical for students who live off of Middle Sound Loop Road, including Anchors Bend, to attend Castle Hayne Elementary for the following reasons. One, transportation. Castle Hayne Elementary has confirmed that they do not have one child from the Middle Sound Loop Road, not one. A bus route does not exist from Middle Sound Loop Road to Castle Hayne Elementary. Per the transportation supervisor, bus transportation to and from Castle Hayne Elementary from Anchors Bend subdivision is 15 miles one way. If we were to carpool twice a day, that's 60 miles per person, per car. The bus route could be an hour and a half each way, which would require pickup at 6:00 a.m. This would require a daily rise of these young children as early as 5:00 a.m. It's very difficult to expect a five-year-old, seven-year-old, nine-year-old, or even to eat breakfast at this early and to remain attentive during the school hours, only to encounter another long bus ride home. Traveling 15 miles to school one way when a viable alternative is a mile or two up the road is a detriment to our children and also a waste of county resources and money. Second point, safety. The 15-mile trip each way to Castle Hayne Elementary prohibits parents from responding to emergencies in a timely manner. I can walk to Ogden Elementary from Anchors Bend faster than I can drive to Castle Hayne Elementary from Anchors Bend. Volunteering. Many of these parents already volunteer at Ogden. A proven, this is a proven element in the success of any school. A 45-minute round-trip ride to Castle Hayne Elementary would prove prohibitive for most parents and a final hardship for all, especially those who work full-time. The mixed-school assignment from Castle Hayne Elementary to Noble School, to Noble Middle School, will reduce the amount of parental participation in the schools of older siblings. Those parents who have schools split up makes no sense. Community. The Anchors Bend children will lose their sense of community. They will attend elementary in Castle Hayne, middle school at Noble, and then they will likely play sports and participate in extracurricular activities with children from Ogden. They will not attend middle school with anyone they know from Castle Hayne except from the children from Anchors Bend, which is not that many. This only isolates the Anchors Bend children further. We currently do have a petition supporting the redistricting of the Anchors Bend subdivision back into the Ogden District. We do understand that Ogden Elementary is crowded, but there have been exceptions made in other districts recently, most notably Wrightsfield Beach Elementary, which is far more overcrowded than Ogden. If we were to build on Airly Road or Landfall, our children could go to an already overcrowded, very overcrowded, close-in vicinity school. We encourage the Board to extend the same consideration to the children of Anchors Bend. In closing, this entire predicament pertains to eight to 10 children of Anchors Bend for the school year 1314. This is not that many students and we hope that Anchors Bend will at least be accepted for an open enrollment at Ogden Elementary. This will keep the youngest children closer to their homes, their parents to be able to be active in schools, which is a foundation for academic success. Ogden Elementary is the only elementary that makes sense for these children of Anchors Bend. Thank you.
Your name was on here twice, I assume that's an accident.
I just hit submit twice. I want to make sure you got my name.
Are you going to play that back? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item six, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendations. Dr. Markley.
All right, we have three administrative recommendations this evening. The first one is Ms. Rhonda Turner, who we're replacing Ashley Sutton, who has been our Assistant Finance Director, but accepted the Chief Financial Officer position in Duplin County. We wish her well in that new position. Ms. Turner is currently the Accounting Manager with Murphy Brown LLC. Previously was employed with New Hanover County Schools as an Accounting Support Associate with the Finance Department. Prior to her employment with New Hanover, she was self-employed as a life insurance agent representing government personal mutual. Also, Ms. Turner was employed as a Financial Assistant Support and Development Analyst with Martin Marietta in Raleigh. She was also the manager of financial reporting and analysis with Oakwood Homes Corporation and with Unified Corporation, and account manager with Kaiser Roth, all located in Greensboro. She received her bachelor's degree in accounting from East Carolina University and it's my pleasure to recommend Ms. Rhonda Turner.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in his favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Turner is here. She will please stand. Our second recommendation is Hagerd High School. The name of the person we recommend for Hagerd High School is Dr. Stephen Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan is currently principal at Heidi Trask High School in Pender County. His administrative contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2017. Previously, he was an assistant principal at John T. Hagerd High School and Roland Grice Middle School. He was an English teacher at Olympic Heights in Boca Raton, Florida, and South Columbus High School in the Columbus County School System. Dr. Sullivan received his Bachelor of Arts in Education from Chapel Hill, a Master's Degree from Troy State, and his EDD in Child and Youth Studies from Nova Southeastern Universities. It's a pleasure to welcome back to the county, Dr. Steve Sullivan.
Motion to approve.
Second. So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in his favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Welcome back.
Dr. Sullivan is here with a guest. If you would stand, introduce yourself and your guest. The final administrative recommendation is for Ashley High School and the recommendation is Jackson Norville. Mr. Norville is currently the Assistant Principal at New Hanover High School. His administrative contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2017. Previously, he served as an Assistant Principal at Pine Valley Elementary School and Cape Fear Middle School within the Pender County School Systems. Mr. Norville was an intervention specialist and a musical, instrumental music teacher at Roland Grice. He has also taught instrumental music at Noble Middle School, Topsal Middle School with Pender. He received his Bachelor in Music and his Administrative Degree both from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. I recommend with pleasure, Mr. Jackson Norville.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments, questions? All in his favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. Norville is here tonight with a guest. I'd ask him to introduce his guest.
This is my wife, Chris Stevens.
Also here supporting tonight is his current principal, Mr. Todd Finn. You would stand?
I had the pleasure of visiting New Hanover last week and I know, Mr. Norville, that you're going to be missed over at New Hanover because I was, Mr. Finn took me on a tour of the academy, the ninth-grade academy. It was super impressive and I found it hard to believe that there were actually children up there. It was so quiet and orderly and the classrooms that we went in, I was truly impressed with the on-task behavior of what I saw. And I'm glad you took me in those particular classes because as a former social studies government teacher myself, I was really impressed with some of the discussions that I heard going on. I was, they were really doing a good job. So I know you'll be missed at Hanover, but Hanover's also, I guess, will be Ashley's game. And so we appreciate all that you all are doing. Okay, our next item on the agenda, item seven, under information, the renewed lease of New Hanover County Pre-K Facility to Wilmington Preparatory Academy, Appendix B, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, recommend the Board approve the renewal of the lease for Wilmington Prep.
Is this on the agenda for information only or is it an action item?
It's information only.
Okay.
The prerogative in the lease is for them to request renewal. They have done so and they have renewed the lease for the following year. So this is just for information only, it's not an action item.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Do we have any questions or anything on the lease itself?
Sounds like you're doing a good job.
Yes, we're very pleased with them.
Now, our concern here is the location of the schools and the area that's in high growth. And so at some point after, we may need to reclaim the building once the lease expires to address some of our growth issues.
It strikes me that, you know, I know when we bought that building, we bought it for a couple of reasons, but it's such a small facility. I guess what I would address to Mr. Porter, if he's still here.
Yes, he is.
Whether or not there would ever be a situation where they might be interested in acquiring it, because I don't know, I mean, I understand that we had the pre-K thing in it, but, I mean, I'm not suggesting that's a condition, I'm just simply saying that I just, I have a hard time envisioning that with a lot of efficiency, we could utilize that because there's no room to really expand. I mean, if we could add classrooms to it or something, but.
We used it as a kindergarten facility for Parsley.
Correct. And that would be our intent if, perchance, when it comes to renovations and some of the projects that would go into a bond, if for some reason we don't get those, then we would have to look at it probably as a kindergarten center for Bellamy Anderson or Parsley at some point again.
But it's only got, what, seven classrooms, six classrooms?
But in an overcrowded school, that's seven.
Well, I understand that, but still. I'm sorry.
Seven classrooms, no lunchroom.
That's what I mean, yeah. I mean, it just, it served our needs when we got it, but I'm just, I'm not sure that it's something that we necessarily should be looking as a solution to anything. That's just my thoughts.
My thing, hopefully you're right in that we wouldn't look to that as a solution if the, because you know with the bond, we would take care of the overcrowding situations that exist in, well, in all of our elementary schools actually, except one. And we wouldn't need that, but you never know. I think that's down the road a ways. Any other comments or questions? Item B is Elementary School Resource Officers, Dr. Markley.
I was asked to put this on the agenda for discussion. At this point. At this point, you've seen the letters that went from the county, from, I think, from the Sheriff's Department to the, to the county commissioners, and it's part of their budget. We did offer our support for that, and at this time, I.
Yeah, because the only thing I know is that what we approved, what the sheriff's recommendation was to us, was the plan that he put together for the, was it eleven additional resource officers?
Yeah, it was his alternate plan, instead of one at every school, to do eleven.
So with those that, I know I received several emails from board members wanting to have a discussion of this.
Yeah, but I didn't receive requests for any specific information for that.
Well, I guess my question would be, have, have we had any further discussion? I, I know Mr. Hayes and Ms. Nichols meet with their counterparts on the County Commission every so often for a breakfast. Do we have any indication of, the indications I've seen in the press, which sometimes can be woefully inadequate, or in fact incorrect, has stated that the County Commissioners are not going to move forward with this request? But have we heard anything along those lines, to the contrary?
Last I heard, they were reluctant to do so.
Well, I did not see the newspaper article, so I don't really know what was said there. All I could relate to at the last breakfast meeting that we had, and there were three of us there, Ms. Kavanagh joined us, and I, Ms. Nichols and myself, and the superintendent with the County Commissioners, and also with the County Manager.
They did not seem to be receptive at that meeting.
Yeah, that, no decision was made, and all we did was basically fill them in. Of course, that had not been approved at that time, as far as the sheriff's recommendation, am I correct? That, that had not been put forward at that time. But it was still sort of up in the air as to, I think they're in agreement about the increased security, we just don't really know what, what form that's going to take. And I think, in a sense, from what I can gather, they're sort of relying and waiting for the security audit that's getting ready to take place, but the results of that audit would be later, and the sheriff would have to have, he needs to know sooner than that's going to be finished, so that he could hire the individuals and get them in place, and the training and so forth.
Well, I guess my point, I, I've seen sort of reports of that as well, but I, I guess the question I have, which is an open question to Dr. Holliday, Mr. Hans, Dr. Markley, board members, does anyone think that the results of the security audit are going to, you know, say that we can make the schools completely safe without increasing a law enforcement presence? I mean.
Excuse me, I, I forgot to mention, and I think Don did too, what you were talking about, they did say that they would like for us to look for land in the Porter's Neck area, and they thought that they could find some money in their reserves, and hopefully we could find some money in our reserves to go ahead and purchase land. So maybe that gives you a little bit of an indication that they did say that.
Yeah, well, I just, I, I just think that, I don't think anyone expects that the security audit is going to say, you know, if you put up a fence here, or change your locks, or place panic buttons, that somehow having a law enforcement presence greater than we currently have would not be useful. I mean, does anyone here, I mean, does anyone think that that's going, going to be the result of this audit? I mean, I think that in, in some respects, we're, we're putting our heads in the sand, we're waiting for an audit, but we kind of know what the result is going to be.
All right, I, I don't think the audit is going to come back and say, you definitely have to have, or you definitely should not have, a law enforcement presence there.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think the audit, the intention of the audit was to replace the SRO officers in terms of security. I think it was just to identify weaknesses within the building structures, so that we could strengthen those areas.
Well, it's in processes and procedures as well. It's looking at structures, it's processes and procedures, it's looking at all hazards as well, not just, not just an assault or a breach on the, on the facility itself. So it's looking at everything.
Well, I think they're looking sort of either/or, to Dr. Hickey's point, they're looking either/or, and I think this is a multifaceted issue, and.
It is.
I don't think waiting until, what was the last estimate you had estimated we'd get that back in July?
July, it'll be the July timeframe.
It'd be too late for SROs at this point.
I mean, I wonder, and this is just, I know this isn't for, for action, it's more for discussion, but I wonder if we just don't put the SROs under our budget? I mean, you know, we receive a, a good deal of money from, a large part of our budget from the county, and in some respects, if they decide to pick this up, they're probably going to cut something else out of our budget, I mean, realistically. And I think since we've, this is my opinion, but since we have, you know, endorsed the sheriff's recommendation for eleven school resource officers, I think we should consider just putting that in our budget, you know, and just taking responsibility for it. Someone needs to take responsibility for the safety of the students, and, you know, we, we should do more, I think, than just give an opinion. I think we should take responsibility ourselves.
Well, I think the sheriff was trying to take responsibility, he just doesn't have the money.
Well, I'm saying, but, but if the county commissioners are not going to say yes, then if we think that they're necessary, then we should just say yes.
But we don't know for sure that they're not going to offer some kind of financial.
Well, I, I understand, but what, what the sheriff is telling us, unless I'm mistaken, is that he, he needs to have a decision, so we can hire these officers.
Yes.
He, he had a deadline of May the first, was it the first of May?
Well, that's if you, he wanted it, if we wanted them in place by the first of the year, I mean, you know, if they're in place by the first of the year, they're in place by September thirtieth. What, what's more of an issue to me is if we're going to take it in our budget, then we got to figure out first what we're going to cut, and I'd like to see those items before we, we go any further, because that's a significant chunk of our budget to say, you know, we're going to dedicate that to cars and officers, and, and then it's, to me, it's also an issue of, okay, then who, who owns it?
Who's in charge? Who's in charge?
Yeah.
What were the latest figures, Dr. Markley, that by decreasing from twenty-four to eleven, weren't the figures around six hundred thousand?
Well, you got also one-time equipment cost, so your first.
Was that included in that six hundred?
Your first year cost is about a million dollars.
Then thereafter, I think it's when it went to the six hundred, once the equipment and all that was purchased.
Chairman, six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars positions, and three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Well, I think.
I remembered the six hundred.
I mean, if we're in agreement, I think it would behoove us to have a more expeditious discussion with the commissioners, at least giving our input that we don't think that the security audit is going to change our recommendation to support the sheriff's recommendation, and that, just like we're working together as partners, trying to come up with a, a new school to, you know, get rid of some of the congestion in our schools, that we also need to work together to make school safety a reality as well. Because we're waiting for something that's really not going to change anything.
You're right, the audit's not going to, like Ms. Hans said, it's not going to say, spell out, you know, it's just going to.
Well, it wasn't necessarily intended to change.
Right.
So what kind of action are you suggesting?
Well, I'm suggesting that maybe we communicate this, you know, have Mr. Hayes, you know, speak directly to their board chairman, or Dr. Markley speak with, you know, Chris Coudray, and just say, hey, you, you guys may be waiting for this audit, but as a board, we don't think this audit's going to change the fact that we think we would endorse eleven more officers. And, and we should, you know, we should move ahead with this discussion, rather than waiting for something that no one on this board believes is going to change our recommendation.
Well, we could certainly do that, and also, it could be addressed the way the initial request was, was that we split the cost, you know, with what we have right now, and we might be looking at something to include the school system, sheriff's department, and the county commissioners, but ultimately, it's all going to come from the county commissioners, because that's where the funding comes from. So it's just, you know, you might take it out here, and you're going to put it back over here, or, I don't know, but we.
Well, at some point in time, the county commissioners are going to have to take responsibility for providing security.
Well, I agree, but I just, if they're really waiting for this audit, you know, because they, in good faith, believe that it's, you know, fiscally responsible to wait for this audit, I, I think they may just not understand what this audit's going to say, and, and, you know, and maybe we just need to be clear that this is not going to change our recommendation.
There is a bill, too, that I know they pulled the funding out of, but they promised that the funding would be there if the bill was passed. So should we also maybe try to get in contact with our representatives up in Raleigh to find out how likely it is, which way the wind is blowing with that bill, that some funding would be coming from the state for safety?
Yeah, well, that'd be nice, be sort of in the future years, but, I mean, again, you know, the sheriff's telling us that if he doesn't hire them, then we won't have them.
And train them now.
So, need just a little better communication between our boards.
We can certainly go back to that and see, because, like I say, we, we've made it known in our position, we, our board endorsed the sheriff's recommendation, and I think we've made it abundantly clear, have we not, Dr. Markley, that the funding we feel should come from the county.
Well, but I'm saying, I keep hearing they're waiting for this audit.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they are, but I, we don't think that audit is going to tell us what maybe they think it's going to tell us.
And the sheriff said May was the deadline he needed, as far as the hiring, because I know we, we go before the.
May first.
May first.
In order to hire and train and have them prepared for the first of the school year.
Fiscally, we wouldn't be allocating any dollars till July one. It just, it wouldn't be part of this year's budget, it'd be part of next year's budget.
And we made that presentation in June to the county commissioners.
The county won't adopt their budget until May, June, and then we'll adopt our budget in June, so no, no, no dollars are going to flow to this until, till July one.
True, but we don't have a commitment either.
We can follow up and let the board know, we can, Dr. Hickey. Any other comments or?
Okay, item eight, excuse me, under superintendent's report, item A, Anchors Bend update, Dr. Markley.
All right, I was asked to sort of do a review on Anchors Bend and sort of how we ended up, where we're at, as well as the initial proposal that you guys, or the information you were sent. So you have a yellow folder in front of you. I'll go through the items that are in here, and then we'll take any questions. The first one was a communication that you received from Anchors Bend residents related to the concerns around Anchors Bend. Second item you'll see is the work session minutes from November twentieth, two thousand eight. I would direct your attention to the last paragraph on that first page. Motion was made to adopt a map known as Option Nine. It was kind of interesting to read through all of the past minutes on this. You guys had a, an ongoing lengthy discussion around multiple options, a lot of them being one, one A, multiple versions of various options, and, so under Option Nine, that any subdivision not under construction as of eleven twenty oh eight in the Ogden and Blair Districts would be assigned to the new school on Holly Shelter Road, which was later named Castlehan. Mrs. Kavanagh seconded the motion, so after discussion, there was a vote to adopt Option Nine. The vote was five yes, two no, with Mr. Shields and Mr. Rhodes voting no. Flip over to the next page, and that continues. And that's really, that was the issue. That's where you, how come it's, you're, we're in this situation as it relates to these particular subdivisions. In the communication you received from them, it talked about Ogden and Murray. I've given you the five-year enrollment numbers, as well as the school's capacity, so you can see how those numbers compare. As you can see, currently, Ogden capacity with mobile units, five eighty-three, current membership, six seventy-three. Same, I was, that's Murrayville. Ogden has a capacity with mobile units of six twenty-five, and a membership of six ninety-three. Then you'll have two maps. The first map shows you all the little satellites that are in the Ogden District, and you can see also some that are in the Blair District as well. Those yellow spots on your map are where areas with no houses at that time. And then a more blown-up version of the Anchors Bend subdivision, and where that's located for those who, if you need a reference point. So you've got the request. I would, at this point, I'll take, answer any questions.
Well, I think it's important to note that when the board did the redistricting, our goal was not to overcrowd Ogden, and our thought was that by identifying these subdivisions that did not have any students in them at the time, that parents who choose to build in those subdivisions were making that decision.
An informed decision.
I mean, we weren't relocating anybody, we weren't redistricting anybody. If you wanted to build in that subdivision, you understood that that subdivision was, was districted to Castlehan, and therefore, nobody would be inconvenienced.
Yes.
What is, how many students are at Castlehan Elementary right now?
Five oh eight.
Seven-month count, right.
What's the capacity there?
I'm sorry?
What's the capacity?
Capacity is five thirty-five at Castlehan, and they have four ninety-eight there now. They're under by about thirty-seven as of the ninth of April.
So they're under by thirty-seven?
Well, they also have a pre-K class there, so actually, they're under by two. Because those, the calculation didn't include that. So they're under by two, so they're basically at capacity at Castlehan. Of course, Ogden and Murrayville are both over.
And the pre-K is going to remain the next year, correct?
Yes.
Dr. Markley, what is your position on this?
At this point, I real, if you, what you do for one of these subdivisions, you have to do for all, and so I'm, I'm at the pleasure of the board in terms of which direction I want to go.
What's your recommendation?
My only recommendation is, what you do for one of these, you do for all of them.
Okay.
Do we even have any room on the footprint at Ogden for additional mobile units?
No, we've got one that we removed, we'll be able to replace it back, but the children that were in that are inside the building, meshed with everybody else now, so there's not going to be any additional room. And if you put another mobile unit out there, because of the impervious surface regulations and everything, I doubt we'd, may be approved for another one, but it would take up the play area, what little play area they have, and it'd be in the front of the, front of the school. So would not recommend another mobile unit at Ogden, other than the, to replace the, the one that we removed. But that will still just house the students that are currently there, because those students were shifted inside at the time.
Do you know how many home sites are in Anchors Bend?
No, I have no idea.
Do you know how many home sites are in all of the unbuilt subdivisions, by any chance?
No, ma'am, I do not.
You can get that information from the planning department, can't you, Eddie?
We'll try, yes.
Anchors Bend's projected to have two hundred homes.
Okay.
And how many they have per year?
Yeah, but I was, I was talking about all of the subdivisions.
If you look at the Anchors Bend map, Anchors Bend actually only is one on that large section. There it looks like, Anchors Bend is part of that, then there are two others that are connected to Anchors Bend as well. One is, looks like Lula Road, and then one that doesn't have any roads in it at the moment.
These other areas, like Windover South, Village Oaks at Middlesbrough, Middlesbrough Village, Overlook at Middlesbrough, Lopez Division, Winds Harbor, the Mason Harbor Yacht Club, are these other areas that are in there that have just, there's no building in it right now? Is that what they are? Because Anchors Bend is also listed as one of those.
Right, those are all the satellites, those are all satellites that were platted subdivisions at the time you made the decision, and they're still listed there, they're still segregated office satellites going to Castlehan, all of those subdivisions.
That's just in the Ogden District. If you notice, within the purple, there are some within the Blair District as well.
Right, you've got nine, you've got nine in the Ogden District, and you've got another good many more, up to about twenty-one total in both Blair and Ogden District.
So the yellow in the purple represents SWAT, Mr. Hans?
Those are satellites in the Blair District that are districted to Castlehan. You have approximately, I think it's twenty-one satellites in both attendance zones, Ogden and Blair, that are districted to Castlehan, based on the decision that you made in two thousand eight.
There are actually a couple of these satellites, students attending Castlehan?
Yes, I believe there are, from the Blair District.
Again, my only caveat is, whatever you do for one of these satellites, you're going to be looking at all of those satellites.
And we don't know how many are of these satellites now that would be in the Blair District that are at Castlehan.
So they would all be, all the satellites. So they would all be, all the satellites are districted to Castle Hain in both attendant zones.
Right, we don't know, I guess, by way of this, do we know the numbers? Because like Dr. Markley said, what we do for one, we're going to have to do for all.
Yes, it's about approximately twenty-one satellites. I can count, I can get the exact count for you.
Because really, I, I think that the reasoning, because we do not like satellites, the board never has liked satellites. The only reason this was done, according to my memory from back in two thousand eight, was that it was a way, it was undeveloped land, it was a way to keep the children in the Middle Sound area at one school, rather than moving them, because those parents wanted to, those children to be at Ogden. And I think the solution down there, there's really only one solution to it, and that is what we're moving forward with, with the county commissioners, which is looking for land up at Porter's Neck to build an elementary school. Then we will redistrict, and this can, will permanently be eliminated then. But right now, it's just moving things around, and it was a temporary fix when we did it.
We were trying...
But it allowed those children to remain there.
We were trying to allow the children to remain there who were already there, as well as allow the people who were buying into those subdivisions to have informed decisions, that when they bought into that subdivision, they knew, "I am going to Castle Hain," so that nobody would be surprised. And we mentioned it and voted on it in public sessions, and discussed it at length, because we wanted to protect the children who were there from having to move unnecessarily.
Mr. Hans, you said when the students from the mobile unit went back into the main building at Ogden, did that just increase class size, or did they take up one of the, the art music room, or what happened?
They did a little bit of everything. They moved it, they increased class size in some areas where they could, and they, they shifted into some resource rooms and other areas there.
And there's no open choice, no, in, for Ogden and Blair, correct? There's nobody being accepted for open choice?
I wouldn't think so, based on the, based on the capacity and the number of students there, there should not be.
Okay.
Any other comments, or...
No, I think it's pretty clear. But I would like to know if you can get that information for me, Mr. Hans, about how many lots we expect to be in all of these satellites?
We'll do that.
Because I know right now, the number was mentioned, I think ten or twelve students. The, the thing I think before the board could move in any direction, we would have to know, because as Dr. Markley said, what we do for one area, we're going to have to do for all. And I don't know what that would do to the other areas that are now at Blair, and then other areas in here that, I don't know how much construction is taking place.
Yeah.
What the numbers might go to, because, like I say, the only permanent solution is that school up at Porter's Neck. And the county commissioners are well aware of that, and without a bond going forward this year, then the agreement has been reached that the two bodies, being the county commissioners and the school board, are moving forward for land, that, that is one thing that, that is moving forward, is, is today. So to go ahead and get started on that, that's really the only permanent solution, because if you take the impervious surfaces, because we had that trouble at Parsley years ago, is either tear up playgrounds, stuff like that, to put a mobile unit in, and because of the requirements from the state. But we can look at the numbers and see if there's any other options that we might could, based upon that, is to, could that be accommodated?
I don't think the board is happy about having to send anybody at a great distance.
No.
But it's what we were more or less forced into whenever we had to make the tough decisions about who to send to Ogden and who not to.
I will tell you, running through those past minutes, I mean, I wasn't here when you guys went through that, but you went through nine separate options, an extensive public hearing process.
Yes, we did.
To get to, get to Option Nine.
It was not done lightly.
No.
I see Ms. Jackson nodding in agreement, that, that all the options that we went through. Quite a bit of lengthy discussion, because we agree with the comments that have been made, that it's not good to have a bus coming through there going to Castle Hain when you're within walking distance. Nobody can disagree with that.
We'll, we'll provide you with the work session with the lots that are there. We'll provide you with a number of kids in those subdivisions currently going to Castle Hain, and just some more information for the ma, for the next work session.
And then we could also look at projections for next year, as far as what, if there's any possibility of doing something based upon that.
If there's any additional information you request, please let me know, and we'll have it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, as you, as you pointed out, Mr. Hayes, not to sound like a broken record, but we're overcapacity at all of these schools. And whether it's the parents at Riceville Beach, you know, that's a sort of temporary solution. I mean, I know that, that probably has fallen to the back burner in terms of their lives. These parents here, these problems are going to keep getting worse unless we're able to, you know, build that new school up in Porter's Neck. So we're just going to keep, keep hearing similar complaints unless we can, you know, get on with it.
That is the only solution, really.
Overcrowded.
Any other comments? Okay, item nine, under consensus items. It's been suggested, it's been an hour and a half, why don't we take a quick five-minute break, then we'll continue.